Good evening. Welcome to the February 12th work session of the Ann Arbor City Council, setting the stage legislative updates and policy agenda development. We have before us today the indomitable Mr. Lazarus.
Good evening, members of council, and thank you for returning to the 2019 visioning process. This evening, we're going to talk about setting the stage, which is really about policy agenda development. Something that I did pass along as part of the materials for the evening is a table that shows the status of those items that the council's policy agenda committee have looked at. So, part of this evening is to validate those, to get input on what you'd like to include in the 19 budget, but really to look much more forward than that. So, as part of the agenda, we're going to engage our youngest residents and citizens in the policy discussion. We're going to show some work that the students at Skyline High School under Ms. Jenkins did for us, and recognize them. And then, we'll get into some administrative notes, and then I'm going to turn the floor over to some guests from Lansing, both Director Edgerton from LARA and then Mr. Profit from GCSI. After that, we'll do a little bit of an update, get some input that the boards and commissions gave us, and then hopefully engage in council discussion. With that, I do want to start with the work that we had support from the students at Skyline High. There are a series of students in the...
Communication and Public Policy Magnet Program.
Communication Policy Magnet Program, who worked with us on giving us their input on the kind of policy matters that will affect them and their lives long-term. In addition to the videos that you see queued up there, and each one only runs about a minute, there's also some student work that they did on some policy documents, which I forwarded to you earlier today. Before we run through those, I do want to recognize them. I do have letters of appreciation from city staff for their work, and we also are going to recognize them with receipt of one of the city's public service coins, so they'll always have in their pocket or in their purse to remember about public service excellence. Before we start, Ms. Jenkins, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity. Our students really do get engaged with these local issues, and that's sort of what we want, I think, all of us here, is we want to develop that next generation of folks who really care about government. And I also just want to give a shout-out to my team teacher, Ross Dunbar. Sort of together, we do this, and we'll be back to talk to you about issues next year.
So, I'm going to run the videos, they're all queued up, and then I will recognize the students quickly.
to Ann Arbor. The mission is to create a path that will lead us to rivers and parks through the center of downtown. According to Ryan Stine, Allen gentleman followed the path, and was in the south. The section has been paved with green. I see out of Allen, outside, outside of Allen. Orders, orders.
Nationwide, there's been kind of a climate change from, say, the past 20 years, where bicycling was kind of a little fringe element. But I think we have to realize that really about two-thirds of the population own a bicycle, and they actually want to use it. And tapping into that group or creating a facility that they're comfortable to use is really key. We work with a lot of communities that look at improving their bicycle destination facilities as an economic survival mode. Because a lot of the people who are graduating from college, what they're looking for is that vibrant downtown, where they live in the nearby area, maybe they live right downtown in their apartment complex, but they can walk or bike to the outdoor cafe. And for them, that is part of the lifestyle. It is kind of the whole experience where they could, whether it be a date night idea of you're kind of, hey, let's bike downtown and go eat at the cafe, or let's go on a kind of weekday bicycle around town. You experience it differently if you walk and bike through a community, it becomes your community, more than if you drive and park in the parking deck, walk and bike to the restaurant. It's not the same thing.
Are you tired of being stuck in traffic, and now you've seen amounts of money for gas, or struggling to find parking? Then you should check out the ride. Reaching nine, we set up households in Ann Arbor and Salento. The ride's expensive services are the best way to ensure you're cheaper, more productive, and better for the environment. With the ride, you are no longer at the risk of fluctuating gas prices. Parking is a much more consistent and affordable budget when you're developing. With the ride, you know what can be constantly focusing on the road. You can get work done, read the news, or just take advantage and relax. With the ride, you do not have to worry about the hardcore cars causing the environment. When more people use buses, carbon and efficient cars are taken off the road, and these reductions in carbon footprint are even more impressive when you're riding one of the AAAT's 55 hybrid buses. In addition to these bus routes, the ride has countless services for you to take advantage of, including parking lot, where you pick it up off your car and get downtown without the hassle of parking. It's your community ride, so you can go from EMU to downtown any time of day. The air ride, to help you get to DTW without having to pay for a taxi or leaving your car in the parking garage during your trip. To find out how to get where you need to go, visit www.johnleride.org/planlunch. And remember, always ride your ride.
It is becoming increasingly more difficult for residents to afford their homes. New homeowners, renters, and people looking to downsize their homes are struggling to find homes.
The biggest issue is, we are a community that has a high demand for housing, partially and significantly impacted by the University of Michigan.
Helped its citizens, City of Ann Arbor has implemented plans to create affordable housing within the area. West Arbor and Pauling Complex demonstrate the city government's abilities to build safe and pleasant affordable housing.
Our most recent project was West Arbor, and the tenants just love the apartment.
With sufficient funding, the city has the opportunity to implement a script on affordable housing prices. Significant progress has already been made to counteract rising housing prices, and the help of taxpayers like you, the work together to make building and analyzing of
I am two steps away from successfully navigating the technology challenge. There we go. So again, I want to thank all of our students for their eyes.
If they could just introduce themselves. Stand and come on up and give your name and what you worked on, and then...
I'm Liam Keating. I worked on the Ann Arbor Area Transportation Authority video.
I'm Bailey Christensen. I worked on the Be Safe campaign, and then I also worked on the All American Cities Grant draft that we produced.
I'm Ethan Wright. I worked on a policy brief for the Headley Amendment.
I'm Tenzin Toon. I worked on the policy brief on the Rover Pipeline.
I'm Maggie LaRoe. I worked on a policy brief about the Gelman-Paul cleanup.
I'm Savannah Cowley. I also did a policy brief on the Gelman-Paul cleanup.
I'm Heaven Jones, and I did the PSA on affordable housing.
So again, I'd like to thank the students. What they've told us, in part, is the issues that are important to them. I will share a story before we move on, and that was, in working with the group at Skyline High, very early on, we were talking about the issue of community affordability, and one of the students had told me that she was a fifth-generation townie, and she was concerned about whether or not she'll be able to afford to raise her family here. So, these are very real issues that affect their future, and I appreciate the concern, the diligence, and actually, the professionalism that they brought to all of their work products. So, I thank them again very, very much. I want to return now to the process, and we talked about visioning as part of our overall budget process. Just as a reminder, this is the second year of our budget cycle, and our intent for this year is to look at economic updates, changes to plan, and horizon issues, and we're going to use these sessions for visioning that help us to look much further into the future so that we can ensure a sustainable quality of life for all of our community. We are going to take the input that we receive and try and get it into the resident satisfaction survey, because our end goal is to create that agile and accountable organization that we are, that's focused on community goals and values. We will return very shortly the comments and input we got on public safety, and put that into a framework for action that we can consider as part of the long-term budgeting process. Our next meeting, we will look at some long-term budget issues and have, hopefully, a healthy discussion on that. Just a reminder of the schedule, the February 26th work session, which was reserved for budget purposes, we've canceled. We don't think we need to meet on that date, so we can give everybody a Monday evening back. But as I said, on March 12th, we will return to look at budget and cost of service and some of our utility rates. And just as a general reminder, this is sort of what we're trying to address, which is the long-term structural budget deficit as one of many issues that we have. So with that, I am going to turn the floor over to our guests from Lansing, as we receive their review and forecast.
Thank you, Howard. Gary Owen and I are here tonight. First thing we want to do, though, is we'll give a broader update later, but we have Shelley Edgerton, the Director of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs in Lansing, which is a very broad department. She's here tonight on marijuana, but trust me, she deals with liquor and all kinds of licensing activities. When somebody doesn't get their real estate license on time, they bark at her. So, Shelley is a lawyer and has been working in state government for close to three decades now, starting back in the House as a staff member for a colleague of mine at that time, a guy named Dave Hennigman, and yes, he is the namesake of the law firm. So, at any rate, Shelley is here with us tonight. She made a special trip over here from Calum Zeus, so we thought we'd bring her up first to talk about the status of marijuana and the licensing activity with respect to that.
Thanks, Kurt. Thanks, Gary. Appreciate it. I was informed, just kind of give you a brief update where we're at. I think you guys have probably been overwhelmed with a lot of medical marijuana information anyways, but as you know, the legislature passed three bills, created a licensing program, as well as IT platforms to go. We started taking applications December 15th, and we, you know, anticipated, you know, we always joked whether it was five or, you know, 5,000 that day, on the first day. Had a couple of walk-ins, very slow process in terms of application processing. So, it's been kind of good for us, because as we started to evolve and create this program, there was really three of us working on this entire program to get started, and we've been able to slowly kind of staff up. So, a few things. We've gone through the emergency rules. I think most communities were waiting for the state to roll those emergency rules out to see how things are going to be operating, and we obviously don't capture everything in the emergency rules. I mean, emergency rules are to basically give a skinny framework. And honesty, most emergency rules are like two pages, maybe three. I think ours came up to be about 32, 35 pages. So, we put a little bit of meat in there, but not nearly enough for what we're going to do. Probably starting late March or April, we'll start a regular rules process where we'll have stakeholders come in and individuals, and kind of do a full-blown rules process, which can take anywhere from, you know, 15 to 18 months. So, I expect the emergency rules, they're good for six months, so I expect those to probably still be in play for a whole year, and then hopefully, we will have rolled out some in terms of that. Terms of, let's see, I talked about accepting applications, and I think that's where you guys really want to probably maybe focus your attention. We recognized early on that a lot of municipals, locals, were not adopting ordinances to allow the marijuana facilities, whether they're waiting for the state to do it, whether they're, you know, waiting to see how this rolls out, or they just don't want to be in the area and have operators within their space. So, we decided, as a department, to kind of ease the pressure of what was happening, and what we could see is, to create this kind of two-step process. And so, two-step is, basically, it allows somebody that's going to seek licensure to come in and kind of be pre-qualified. They fill out, they do the background check, they have the financials, they kind of go through that first step, and we say, yeah, you're good to go. What they don't have is basically the local sign-off, and that's what we wait for. And then, you know, they can, you know, if it was Ann Arbor, or, you know, Pinconning or someplace, they could go and say, hey, I want to be licensed, and then come here. That's kind of the second step for them to be able to go through. You know, there's only really, in reality, we've been trying to keep track based on newspaper articles, clips, some of the applications that have come through. We've had, there's maybe 70, 75 municipalities, local townships and cities that have actually jumped on. So, if you think about the state of Michigan, that's not very many to cover this industry. So, I think we'll maybe start to see an uptick, but a lot of people are obviously, you know, wanting to at least come in and get pre-qualified. In fact, my recent numbers are, and this is kind of a, we kind of joke, because the day of December 15th, I mean, we were just ready for security. We had, we thought we'd have log lines, we had, you know, all kinds of things, and I had two people walk in. That was it. So, we were over-prepared, but that was better. But we've actually got about 700 people that have filed in line or in paper and in process, you know, for applicants, and that's spread out between the different levels of growers, between the A, B, and C growers with the different plants, you know, processors, and then provisioning centers, and obviously, secure transporters and the safety facility folks. So, we're getting there, it's just nobody is, you know, we haven't gotten to those final steps yet. And I would suspect that we have a board meeting in March and likely in April. If not March, definitely April, but we're hoping that we actually have some applications. Either we deny, or they were early ones that came in and were pretty simple, because it was a sole proprietor and just wanted to have like a 500, you know, 500 plant grow. So, a pretty simple application that we would be able to actually get those passed, and they, you know, could kind of start this process. So, that's where we're at, kind of in a nutshell. Most recently, we did have legislation pass, House Bill 5144, that kind of gave us some technical cleanup. One of the key parts of it, though, too, is the ability for us to now actually formalize the advisory panel. Under the prior bill, as it was enacted, it had language regarding, it said the people that appointed needed to be licensees. Well, we don't have any licensees until now, so we went back and just made it kind of industry representative. So, hopefully, we'll get the advisory panel, they'll help us on the rules, and we can keep forward. But till then, we're just moving along as quickly as possible, as probably you guys are, in trying to understand the dynamic of everything in this industry. So, I will take some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much for making the 90-minute trek out here, especially in this weather. I think it goes a long way to building some trust in a new industry.
Sure.
Thank you very much. I quickly want to touch, based on the two-step process, I think we've all been learning about attestation letters, A through Z, as it seems. First, just want to, and when I inevitably get something wrong, please tell me. Attestation letter E is signifying that we're attesting that these licensed applicants have been in operation in good standing with the community for some time, and I think we have that in good order. You've probably received about 13 of those letters from the City of Ann Arbor. Moving to attestation letter I, which is the...
Second phase.
The golden egg, yeah, the final stage, the final approval stage. Effective today, our local zoning ordinance went into effect, and our first hearings at the Planning Commission will be on February 21st. I think it would be helpful for us to understand, just so you know, it's most complex, they'll go through an administrative zoning review, and then getting special exemption use through our planning commission, no vote of the council. What will, in order for the state, in order for Laura to receive an attestation letter I, what do you expect from us? Is it simply enough to go through that special exemption use?
Yeah, it's basically this, same thing it is, it can be a letter. I mean, we didn't create forms for everybody.
Yeah.
I mean, we tried to make this very simple, because we said, okay, because we had a lot of locals, hey, what's an attestation? What's it look like? So, let's, you know, we drafted up a form. If the clerk themselves just even want to write a letter that says, you know, these folks are approved to there, which you have to understand is, this is just, it's viewed as not an impediment to licensure. So, we're not looking at this as, oh, you know, you've been open, and so you're a bad actor, you know, you don't get a license, you know, in the new regime. It's more about, this is just, they've been here, we've approved them, we go for it. We're trying to recognize those communities that actually had authorized and allowed facilities to operate.
So, from your perspective and from Laura's perspective, that special exemption use would be enough to receive an attestation letter I? You're not waiting for final permitting?
Yeah, we're not waiting for final permitting. Yeah, if you, if the clerk has said, even from an E or an I step, if they have said, we approve these folks, and this is where it is, then we're going to accept that. But we just need the local attestation, this is where it's at, in terms of that.
Okay.
And, you know, some clerks are all wrapped up in it, and it's like, it's very simple, you know, they're just attesting to the individuals that have been operating and are good to go, essentially, as we would say, for the locals to be able to, you know, push them forward and that. And it's not viewed by us, then, as an impediment to licensure. There could be other things in their license that stop them from getting a license.
Sure.
Let's be honest. You know, this has been an unregulated industry for a long time, so, you know, there could be a lot of other things that are in their application that stop them, besides the approval by a local that says yes or no. You know, if locals will say, oh, yeah, they're great actors, but, you know, you guys, some places have not done background checks. You know, we uncover something that might prevent licensure.
Sure. So, in, from Laura's perspective, if we're having our first special exemption use hearings on the 21st, it wouldn't be unreasonable that we would send attestation letter Is in short order after that?
After that, because they're going to take that in the second step, that it was there.
Okay.
So, I think that's kind of, I know we have some municipalities that are similar situated like that with the, you know, they're doing a zoning, or they have zoning. I mean, honestly, we have City of Detroit, we have attorneys sending us court orders that allow the authorization, because in the City of Detroit, there's all kinds of issues and litigation going on with their new ordinances adoptions.
Great.
So, I think they're trying to make sure that those individuals are recognized, and it's not viewed as an impediment to licensure.
Okay. Well, thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
Thank you again for being here.
Hey, no problem.
Other questions? Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, this is a fun topic to talk about, lots of moving parts. This is a broader question about Laura's approach to the potential ballot issue of recreational use for marijuana. Do you see this as a blueprint, what you're doing now, as a blueprint for how you might handle legalized recreational use of marijuana?
You know, I, obviously, you know, Laura was chosen, one, because we regulate a lot of things. We do licensing, that's our business. You know, we regulate more than a million and a half people in facilities. So, obviously, we have some knowledge and wherewithal to be able to craft a program. Is it a blueprint? I wouldn't necessarily say it, but obviously, we're going to be able to cut and pace, because I think if I recall from the reading of the ballot, we have about 90 days, you know, once it's signed, we have 90 days, it's effective. We have a very short window, you know, to be able to basically issue licenses, or they just get to operate until we get to licensure. So, yeah, you know, realistically, would I be saying, no, we're not going to cut and pace from some of this? Absolutely. You know, is it a blueprint? Not necessarily. You know, we're not focused on that, we're trying to get the regulated market up, and obviously, we're keeping our eyes on it to see what happens, but, and we would like to be able, you know, we can pick and choose some of this stuff, especially if it's licensure, why create a new platform? I can just roll this over and create the new rec program, easy. But we don't know. You know, I mean, that's the thing, there'll be certain nuances, and obviously, rules will be a critical issue. I'm not sure if we can get those done that fast. That's going to be a stumbling point for us, you know, for some interpretations and things. But as I said, you know, we've been trying to issue advisories to give industry an opportunity to see kind of the direction we're going. Obviously, they're not binding, but we felt that it was a good way to communicate with stakeholders and folks involved in this, to say, hey, this is kind of where we're going, and because you, people had to make plans, so.
Thank you.
That's it. You're welcome.
Councilmember Young?
Just one general question.
Sure.
Mine is far more basic. You talked about creating an advisory committee, which you're doing now, apparently.
Right.
And so, I'm on the city's, you know, liquor license review committee, and the city's role in reviewing liquor licensees in the city has changed over the last few years. The state has actually taken less ability, authority away from local units of government to provide oversight in that area of liquor licensing. But we still do, the City of Ann Arbor, annual reviews, and we look to the MLCC. There are appeals and hearings heard at the MLCC level that impact local liquor license holders everywhere in the state. So, is this advisory committee going to function something like the MLCC for...
No.
No.
No. So, there is a five-member board that's charged with the responsibility of actually issuing the licenses and reviewing renewals or transfers or change of ownerships. The department is doing kind of the back-office work, I'll say, you know, collecting all the data, getting all the data, putting this forward to the five-member board that will actually say, yes, these people can get a license, kind of like LCC, MLCC. The advisory panel, which is structured in statute, is strictly that. It's an advisory panel to be used by the board to help navigate some of the topics and areas that the board really doesn't have enough time to get to from a rules-making process, because the advisory panel is made up of stakeholders, locals, police, industry representatives, you know, various departments. And so, that group will be used or tasked with the responsibility of, let's say, really flushing out details on testing. You know, what are some more of the levels of testing that we need to add or put into place for rules? That's what that advisory panel is for. The actual licensing board of five members, they're the ones that'll make the determination, final determinations on whether somebody gets a state operating license. The department is doing a lot of that work up to that point, to basically give it to the board to make those decisions. You know, collecting the applications, you know, answering the questions, building basically the file, and then we will give that to the board, and the board will make those determinations at that. So, to some degree, it's a little bit like MLCC with approvals, but that's in there. Where locals also can have an input, and we just changed this in 5144, is really on the renewal cycle. You know, these are one-year licenses, and so, if you have operators that are not good, you know, don't pay their taxes, they're selling to minors, your police have been in there busting people, those kind of things, that's the kind of information the department wants to know at renewal time, so that you can actually have some input as to whether those people need their license renewed. You know, and if you think about this from a perspective of regulation, you know, these people are paying a lot of money to come in and be regulated in this market, you know, not only to the locals, the 5,000, but they're paying an application fee of 6,000, and then, you know, it's all their startup costs and everything. and then, you know, it's all their startup costs and everything else that may be to create that small business, but then also, there is the regulatory assessment fee at the end before they get to operate, and we have ranges anywhere from 10 to 57,000. So, if you're coming in, I mean, it, it's not a small amount of money to, to actually be regulated, so it's, it's really incumbent upon individuals to follow the law, because the state, local, I mean, we can go in there, you know, we can assess their books, look at their records, check the point of sale, figure out why, you know, red flags are coming up on our system, our IT system, for things that are being sold, the balances aren't working, as the plants are inventoried into the system. So, there's a lot of checks and balances, but I think that ability for locals to weigh in at renewal cycles is critical, because we've heard that a lot, you know, whoa, you know, these people are bad people, or, you know, they don't pay taxes, or, you know, so, here will be the opportunity to weigh in and say, we don't want these people renewed, you know, we, and they have to get the authorization, that's the other key thing. So you will have a second chance to, hey, these are bad actors.
Thank you very much for that explanation, I like everything you said about how this process works.
Okay, there you go.
So I just, you know, I'm thinking of, you know, how the liquor licensing works, and, locally, you know, it's, it's a good thing that we do annual reviews, because then you can, you know, our treasurer's department checks to see who has and hasn't paid their taxes, and if they've paid their liquor license fee, and building, you know, checks off.
You know, all of the things, have they complied, you know, have, you know, how many complaints have you got?
Fire department, the police department, right.
Or, you know, the complaints and all that, all that kind of builds a record within, you know, for the renewal cycle.
And it's a good thing.
So, it's a, it's a good thing, and it's, it's incumbent upon people to understand that they, they want to, they should be good actors, because they've invested a lot of money. It's a, it's a small business or a large business, and they've put a lot of money into this effort to all of a sudden come in and just have the state shut you down and you're out. You know, I mean, I think if you bought a building, I'm sure the, the property prices here in downtown Ann Arbor are quite high, you know, for square footage, if you were going to buy something, and, you know, oh, that's out the door in one year, so, yeah.
That should certainly incentivize the license lawyer to check all those boxes, to, yeah, pay the bills, and, yeah, do everything else they're supposed to do, so, thank you very much, and thanks again for coming from Kalamazoo.
No problem.
Have a safe trip home.
Okay, I will.
Further questions?
Anything else?
Let me end my thanks, I really appreciate your, your coming on out, you know, this is obviously new ground for us all, and we're glad that the, you know, that your office, Laura's taking it as seriously as they are, and, you know, really appreciate your coming down to help us with it.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you very much, you guys have a good night.
You bet, safe travels. Mr. Prophet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We can get back to some of that after a little bit, I thought I'd give you kind of an overlay initially of the atmosphere and the, and the activity in Lansing right now, and we get, get into some details and some specifics, more, more interested, probably specifically in Ann Arbor. So the governor's introduced his $56.8 billion proposed budget last week, and just to keep that in context, 40% of that's federal, 40% is restricted, which leaves you about 18%, there's 2% fudge there, I guess, but 18% general fund, or 10, a little over 10 billion. In terms of the general fund, there was only 0.6% revenue growth this year, and again, 0.6%, and that's in the probably eighth or ninth year of some measure of economic growth, so it kind of gives you some picture of the revenue structure that the state has, has crafted over the last, probably decade, at least last seven years, and what it yields in terms of what it's able to capture from the economy and then distribute in the form of public services, or funding for support for public services. In the governor's budget recommendation, a top priority is education, but primarily in the context of talent development and talent, as they've described it. Talent for them is, and I say this especially here in Ann Arbor, because it hasn't tended to include the same sort of focus on higher ed, and has tended to try to move the dialogue more towards certificated kind of licensings. So instead of going, their, their view is over time, the new paradigm shift that they see is moving away from four-year degrees, or at least moving away from four-year degrees that are pursued for four years, and then you go on and get a graduate degree or a, or a postgraduate degree, or a professional degree, or whatever, moving more towards perhaps, and many times interrupted, four-year degree approaches, and in many cases, they are strongly encouraging with the money in the budget, more certificated type of educational activity. I think that debate is going to play out, obviously, in this community, in this region, we've been served very well by the significant number of four-year degree holders and graduate degree holders and professional degree holders, and we're going to try to undertake an effort with many folks around here, and obviously, Washtenaw Community College, University of Michigan, Eastern Michigan, the other schools that we have in this area are, are very engaged in this activity, but we're going to try to encourage a broader view of what is talent and, and how it should be developed. To be sure, over the next week or so, you will see the governor propose his, what he, what they've labeled their Marshall Plan for talent development, which again, is going to have a primary focus on that more certificated, post-high school job readiness, which is not, I don't see it has, that it has to be inconsistent with the approach to, the traditional approach to higher ed and, and four-year and postgraduate and professional degrees, but at this moment in time, it hasn't included them to the point where we would try to encourage, and I, and I say that all in the context, obviously, in this area, we rely very heavily on a adequately funded University of Michigan, Eastern Michigan, and the other schools near you. Washtenaw Community College continues to do fairly well, but I would say this on that, Washtenaw Community College and other community college appropriations this year under that plan, their increase is just pretty much their replacement of personal property tax that was lost in the personal property tax relief plan, and I say that in the context, this can kind of scatter, but just to connect a little bit, that is the same what is being proposed for your statutory revenue sharing. In terms of general fund support for statutory revenue sharing in the proposal, it's recommended only to include what they view as excess personal property tax, and, and that's what they're proposing to use for your, what would otherwise be statutory revenue sharing. There's 300 million in one-time funding in the budget, one-time, meaning that was kind of lapsed or, or not, it, it won't be recurring funding. The targets for that are, from the governor's budget recommendation, are some measure of debt reduction, for example, they want to, they have a bond on the state capital renovations, they want to pay that off at about 70 million, they have some bonds outstanding on some veteran homes, and that's about 40 million, so that, that's about 100 of the 300, 112 actually. A big chunk of it will go towards the Marshall Plan that the governor will come out with later, and they're proposing a big chunk of it for roads, one-time money for roads, to accelerate the proposal they came out with a few years back on that gradually increasing take from the general fund of 600 million ultimately for road construction. That would be 175 million, so it's, you know, it, there's, you know, like with every budget, I'm sure, I suspect there's some things you like and some things you won't. Obviously, that piece is gathering a lot of, I think, optimistic encouragement and, and The, just to remind you of that piece, the splits under the recommendation are 38% for the state, 22% for cities, and 40% for the county road associations. So, I mentioned the personal property tax distribution, again, that there's, what they view as excess personal property tax, you know, in that fund that they created when they eliminated the personal property tax, and their plan is to use what they view as excess to fund statutory revenue sharing and community colleges. I think you will hear a lot of argument over whether you should be receiving that regardless, because that, at least once upon a time, was your personal property tax. Already, I think you can see some measure of erosion of that promise that was made a few years ago. You'll, you'll hear a lot of this as commentary and editorial comment, and it is my view, and I, I'm sure you'll hear it probably from MML, the Community College Association and others, that that personal property tax is yours and should not be counted against what you would otherwise receive as statutory revenue sharing. 46 million for the, you know, they set up a new indigent defense approach, they've got 46 million in the budget for that, which is a new effort. The, there's a, there's a new emerging dialogue on, on tax refunds. Historically, tax refunds all came from the general fund. They're starting to say, well, maybe we should take part of the tax refunds from the school aid fund, since they're, since they're a recipient of, of some of those revenue sources. You can obviously see right there, an immediate rub between general fund recipients and, and K-12 recipients. The governor is proposing a water tax of sorts for water infrastructure, which, if they could get legislative support, I'm sure we'd be very aggressive in trying to make sure we, we get full utilization of that here in Ann Arbor. Tipping fee for recycling, Gary Owen will say a little bit about the recycling approach after a few minutes. I say all this in the context of what's going on in Lansing, and I think this is, it's important to remember, you got, you know, demands for roads, you got demands for tax relief, you got demands for, for education, you got all these different demands feeding into this general fund, which again, has 0.6% of revenue growth, so it's, be interesting to see which one of those approaches, especially with, in, in an election year, plays out. And in the context of an election year, I think, I think it's important to be reminded, the governor leaves this year, of course, lieutenant governor is running for governor, the AG leaves this year and is running for governor, secretary of state is leaving and perhaps running for the senate, the speaker is leaving and running for AG, senate majority leader is leaving, the house appropriations chair is leaving and running for the senate, and the senate appropriations chair is leaving. In the senate, 26 of 38 will leave because of term limits, seven of those are Democrat and 19 are Republican. In the house, 26 of 110 will leave this year, and next year, another, or, in two years from now, another 39, so over the next two years, more than half of the house will leave because of term limits. And it creates a lot of change and transition, and I would remind folks again, when you have a short window, six-year term limit to define yourself, a lot of these difficult votes become even more difficult, because if you get defined, if you're a conservative member, and you get defined early as somebody who raised taxes, that may be it. So it's very difficult with these majorities to deal with issues like revenue and those sorts of things. There will be a number of items on the ballot, which again, feeds into the culture and, and what's going on in Lansing. The redistricting approach is likely to be on the ballot, part-time legislature, I'm not sure, prevailing wage repeal is struggling a bit, marijuana, as you, as you heard earlier, is likely to be on the ballot, others that are still working to get there, the line five ballot approach, the paid sick leave approach, and the fracking ban, and there could be some others. So it could be a full ballot, and, and it's going to be with a lot of transition in the currently held spots. Let me, I thought we'd get into a few specific items here, and, and Mr. Mayor, if, if, if council, you know, sometimes this is better at give and take, so, if, if, if you want to, if you want us to do more first, or if you want to have some exchange, I mean, I don't want to wear everybody out here.
That's right, you want a break for questions now, I have Councilor Ackerman? All right.
Yeah, I'm confused about the road funding. Sorry, so, we have a slide in here that's, that indicates the governor, Snyder's proposing 325 million more in, in road funding, yeah, so I'm confused about how the funds would be allocated. You, you, you said
I'm talking about, when I mentioned the 38, 22, 40.
Is that the Michigan Department of Public Transportation's proposal, or?
No, it's the governor's proposal, 38, 22, 40, and that's yet to play out. You know, this is, this is only proposed.
This is for, okay, so there's a breakdown, some for state highways and interstates?
I'd have to see that more, the interstate, obviously, is handled pretty much by the feds.
Here's where I'm confused, are, are they not using the, the normal Act 51 formula?
These additional funds, they're talking about a little different approach, these one-time funds.
So there's no to that, okay.
Let me, but as soon as I say that, let me, let me confirm, because it's, it was just rolled out last week, we're just getting into it as well, and it was pretty, none of the detail was really shared at that time, I, you know, it was kind of, it was pretty conceptual, so let me, let me, let me get, let us get you an answer to that.
Okay, because it looks like maybe what was being recommended was that this extra money would be used for, again, state highways and interstates, and which was, does not follow the normal formula.
Yeah, as you asked the question, it raises questions in my mind, and, and so, let me, let us gather some more on that.
And then just circle back on the state share of revenue?
Yes.
So you talked about the statutory revenue sharing piece, and that there's this recommendation to include the extra, the excess property tax, I think you said?
Personal property.
Personal property tax.
You recall, they, they had the personal property tax elimination, and they created that fund, that they would gather that tax at Lansing, and then, and then distribute that to the previous recipients of personal property tax. They're saying that that fund has, has gathered more than was expected.
Okay.
And that, what they say is more than what was expected was not something you would have received, and that they're going to give you that, just the same, even though it's in the fund, and, and because they're giving you that, they don't have to give you statutory revenue sharing, they don't have to give the community colleges an increase.
Okay, so what the, and what the governor proposed in his budget?
That's the, that's the governor's proposal, that was rejected.
Okay, so do you think that will be ultimately adopted?
One indication was last year, he proposed the same thing for community colleges, legislature rejected that and gave community colleges their, their typical annual appropriation increase, increase, plus the, what they, what they're calling excess property tax, personal property tax. So, it's, they took, they actually took a, a bigger shot at it this year by saying, this is, we're going to use this to pay for revenue sharing. I'm, we haven't had a lot of conversation with him yet, because it just came out last week.
Okay.
But we'll be working closely with MML and MAC, counties get hit pretty good with it, and townships are not big recipients of, of statutory revenue sharing, so they're not as, as, as large of a victim, but cities and, and the county have a, have a pretty good claim, wait a minute, that was ours. We were supposed to get that anyway, that was our personal property tax that you took with personal property tax relief, you can't use that now for, for revenue sharing. That'll be the claim, we, that claim was successful last year legislatively in the community college context. We, in, in looking at a couple items, Howard prepared a, you know, for our purposes, really good spreadsheet, and I would say this about all your staff, I mean, Howard, obviously, as your, as the leader of the staff, has been outstanding, you know, for the last couple of years, and you've seen us, you know, when we've come up here before with, you know, Matt Nodd, especially on the Gelman issue and some other environmental issues, and Greg on some of the infrastructure issues, and you walk through your staff, Colin at the, you know, Parks and Rec, have just been outstanding to work with, so I, I would, you know, and I'm sure I'm leaving, somebody's going to say, how come you didn't mention my name? Well, you, you really do have a good staff here, and I would say this in this context as well, you know, it's interesting, I think, that you have outstanding, from our perspective, and we do a lot of local government work, outstanding transparency, and you have outstanding community engagement, and I guess this might be a little more political, but I think you have an outstanding progressive approach to community service, and, and it's interesting that with all those things, one of the best qualities of, of life that we see in Michigan is right here, outstanding transparency, outstanding community engagement, and a very progressive approach. We tell people, a lot of times, Ann Arbor isn't jam-packed because it has such a wonderful, you know, low tax rate, or a
Really?
Or a wonderfully low, you know, you know, regulatory climate, you have, you know, people want to live here because they can have a very good quality of life. And I say that as a lead-in to both the piece that Howard prepared for us, and to be honest, we used, you know, the mayor's annual report, because it was, the mayor said, man, it's really long, I know, but it, but it was, for those of us, you know, I did read it, and it worked well in terms of organizing what was, what was of interest to the city from the mayor's perspective. Let me stop there just for a minute and have Let me stop there just for a minute and have Gary Owen come up. In Howard's piece, and in the mayor's piece, there was some talk about, obviously, recycling, Gelman, and the deer call. So we thought we'd go through a couple of those.
Briefly, maybe quickly, I feel a little awkward talking about fire protection grants, because you talk, you work so hard on it, so I won't make sure you cover it.
Okay, fire protection grants. The City of Ann Arbor threw at least two mayors now, and through multiple city administrators and city councils, you guys have led the charge, to be honest, together with the City of Ipsy, to get full funding for fire protection grants. Just to remind you, fire protection grants is a statute, Public Act 289 of somewhere in 1970s, where the legislature said, for state assets, the state should pay for the wherewithal for fire protection services for those assets. Obviously, in here, it's University of Michigan. It's even easier in the context of Ipsy with Eastern. It's like, you know, the state of Michigan put Eastern right there, and then, you know, you can imagine them looking around, well, who's going to provide the fire protection services? And if they were to start fresh, they wouldn't have picked on the most economically distressed community in the state, or in the region, to take care of fire protection services for this regional asset, this state asset. So it makes all the sense in the world why the legislature passed that statute and required the state to fully fund fire protection services, and that is the wherewithal to provide those services, training, equipment, not just fire runs. The state has never complied with that statutory duty. And one of the regrettable parts, I mean, everybody likes to bark at Headley a little bit, but this was pre-Headley, so it doesn't have the Headley protections of a mandate that needs to be funded by the state. So it's been funded as low as zero. Governor Angler actually vetoed the whole thing one time, and we had to override that veto. Most often, it's been funded right around 40%, 35, 40%. I think the City of Ann Arbor now, at 60%, gets close to $1 million roughly, or maybe not quite. Under the Governor's proposal, and to give him credit, that was very creative, they're talking about funding that out of, well, it's about a 50% increase. Yeah, which is the first time that a governor, and my work in Lansing, has ever talked about a meaningful and serious increase to that statutory duty. So I give the Governor a lot of credit, and his staff and DTMB for recognizing the statutory duty, and their proposals for 15 million. It's currently funded at a little over 8 million, so you can do the math. I mean, if you're getting a million now, you'd probably get close to 1.8, somewhere in that neighborhood under this. So thanks for the reminder.
Yeah, no problem. And honestly, I would have felt awkward because of how much time Kirk does spend on fire protection grants, and you all should know that. Really working hard to make sure we try to get as close to full funding eventually as we can. Just a couple issues, maybe, that are very Ann Arbor-specific, and things that we have presented on before, things that we are working on regularly, and like Kirk mentioned, it might make sense for this to be a give and take, and ask questions as some of these things come up, because it may be difficult to go all the way back. But obviously, a brief update on Gelman, and some of the activity that we've done, and thank you to all of you folks that have been involved for now a long time in engaging the state and engaging locally on this issue. I think that the progress that has been made, as slow and painful as it has been, has been pretty tremendous when you look at it from a lens, from state government, and really from 201 site statewide. It's probably, well, to date, it's the only chemical that has been updated on the 201 criteria list of the 364, whatever there are. That's phenomenal. And that's not because it's scientifically the only one that makes sense to update. It's because the community didn't accept no for an answer, and told the state that, you know, 85 parts per billion for this chemical was unacceptable, the scientific, you know, science didn't support it. And in fact, they actually moved an emergency rule, moving the 85 parts per billion down to 7.5 parts per billion, codified that into permanent rule, and now the courts will go back and look at the consent judgment, and we're not able to speak any further, or else I could be tackled by Mr. Postama at any second. But I would say that you all should be congratulated, really, because of all of, you know, the public resolutions, the things that you've done publicly, but also privately, the amount of time you guys have put into it. So thank you for all the help on that, and we shall see as it develops in the courts. And so that is Gelman. Obviously, you may remember, two years ago, they appropriated funds to the DEQ to look at some more monitoring wells, and possibly other things that could go towards that site. I believe the number is 750,000. They are looking at possibly taking some of that 750,000, creating some sort of community engagement via the web, some more educational tools that allow for people to understand really what it is, and then not, on the one hand, a scary piece, but on the other hand, not understanding exactly what that chemical is, and what's been left behind, and, you know, what that 1,400xane plume looks like.
Any progress or updates on the shallow groundwater exposure, the basement vapor intrusion screening standard?
So they're in the final, they're in the final stages, I believe, of updating the 201 list completely, as obviously that is part of that. And I believe that they will be done with that by mid-year. So I think they're out for their final comment period, and I'll get you a specific answer on a date that we can expect that to be promulgated, and maybe report back directly.
There hasn't been any movement on that number. They had started with a lower number, and it come up significantly, I mean, based on some industry-
Let me clarify, let me clarify, just so I'm not, I think I know the answer, but let me clarify and get you a complete answer, if that's okay. Any other questions on Gelman? Deer sterilization, and I, you know, hesitate to obviously get into that world as well, but a bill's been dropped in Lansing, a House Bill 5321, by Representative Tristan Cole out of the Charlevoix-Alpena area, to eliminate deer sterilization as a method of taking. And you can imagine, this is a bill that comes from the hunting and fishing community, a group called the Michigan United Conservation Community, or Michigan United Conservation Clubs, MUCC, in an attempt to celebrate or protect the constitutional right to hunt and fish, as they would articulate it, and really prevent ways to deal with deer populations outside of, you know, the actual hunting of these populations. And on its face, a bill that is very popular in northern Michigan, very popular with a lot of these types of organizations, but not one that necessarily contemplates what happens here in Ann Arbor. I would say that Tom Crawford and Derek Delacour deserve a ton of credit. They came up to Lansing, testified in the House Natural Resources Committee, and their testimony was, in part, the reason why the chair announced a subcommittee instead of reporting the bill out, to look at Ann Arbor's issues specifically, to look at urban deer populations specifically, and how you can manage those deer herds in areas that normal taking or normal hunting is just not an option scientifically. And so that subcommittee is meeting on Thursday. Mr. Delacour will be back in Lansing, lucky him, on Thursday, to testify before that committee with more data, more information, and, you know, again, to their credit, they've been very convincing. The chair's been, you know, Mr. Howell from thumb, a Republican, a former lawyer from township government, has been very thoughtful about his approach, so obviously, we appreciate that in that sense. I don't know of any, all the recycling and statewide initiative that the Governor rolled out as part of his budget, state-of-the-state process. One piece that you might be aware of is the tipping fee. Currently in Michigan, the tipping fee is 37, 36 cents a ton, one of the lowest in the country, certainly the lowest in the Midwest. That number would elevate to $4.75 per ton. Politically difficult for certain, and he would try to make that more uniform across several fees that industry pays in that world. And so the Governor and his team are working with the legislature and the stakeholder community to help them understand how to bring some of these fees into uniformity, or at least some sort of range that they can live with nationwide. Another piece, of course, is the CMI funding has dwindled, and in order to utilize the remaining Clean Michigan Initiative funding, it would actually cost them a lot of money to leverage that debt. And so what they've tried to do is, is come up with some creative, and I believe that the total number comes out to about $5 per citizen for their statewide recycling initiative that would allow for them to regain some sort of leadership, at least in the Midwest, on the recycling initiative. I would say that initially, it did not, you know, go over very well with legislative leadership, but that stakeholder groups have started, they're starting to look at what might be a reasonable fee. I think DEQ, together with the Governor's office, are going to take this on together, and we'll see what the outcome is, and obviously, we'll be watching that very closely on your behalf. I don't have any other particulars.
I could maybe walk through just a couple others that we noticed in the mayor's annual report, and in Howard's spreadsheet. I would say this about local government finance and growth. I think it's a time to, you know, it sounds patronizing, but I did appreciate that that was a highlight, and perhaps the first thing in the annual report, because it's got to be a top priority for this next leadership team that will take office in Lansing, you know, in 10 months. And as these folks come to you, and you're going to hear this on several issues that we talk about, but as these folks, I mean, you know, Ann Arbor is 120,000, you know, 130,000 residents, and you speak for them. And so when somebody comes to you for your vote, let them know what matters, and that's a good point of departure. This local government finance piece is huge. I mean, we have the situation we have, I think, in the numbers I saw in the mayor's numbers were like 2% revenue growth for 3% expense growth, or something like that. I know I'm screwing up the numbers a little bit there, but obviously, and that's in a good economy, or a decent economy. I'm not sure what hap, and right now, we're selling 17 million cars. You know, that's, and we've been doing that for multiple years. That's the biggest driver of state revenue growth. And what happens when we sell 16 million, or 15 million? You know, the numbers you see right now coming out of the state, which are pretty weak for local government, aren't going to get any better. So I would really encourage us to continue to drive that issue, and we'll be working with Howard to continue to develop plans on what is a better way to finance local government, and try to get that in play with the new leadership. There will be, like we mentioned earlier, a whole group of new leaders in Lansing, and this is the time, over the next 10 months, to use that time to try to move our agenda so that it becomes first and foremost with them. Same thing with infrastructure kind of pieces. We're working closely with the candidates for governor, so that they come out early with a major piece, we hope, on infrastructure. I noticed this, and we'll walk through just a couple of pieces, but I love this piece, and I just want to say it because, you know, we do read this stuff. We live in, and I might use this with several, we live in an American web of race, gender, class base, a subconscious bias and privilege. And again, I think when you guys speak like that, it makes a statement to a lot of folks in that, in that context, you guys choose to collaborate, be vigilant, and be intentional about your responses. I think those are good, it's a good place to be as a leader in this state about where we want to take this state. We talked a little bit about roads. Pedestrian safety is a good piece to highlight as a place where the state, under the current leadership, has been very preemptive. Again, you guys have been real leaders in the state on trying to provide a pedestrian-friendly, and I get that there's, you know, different dialogue locally, how to deal with pedestrian crosswalks, but you're trying to deal with that, and when the state preempts your ability to do that, it causes, you know, a problem. And it's not just an isolated area of preemption, as you've seen it in many different cases. Another piece, and, you know, I saw Jaclyn mention this, especially the Howard on millage elections, and certain legislators would restrict millage elections to only certain election dates. And again, dramatically impact your ability to respond to your voters and when they want to have an election. You are restricted now to four dates, and this would restrict it further. We are pleased to report that Bill Zagman in our office, who works closely on election issues, told me today that the thing is really getting beat up in committee, and he doesn't see a lot of movement forward with that issue right now. So that work that you did early to register concerns about state restrictions on when you can hold your local millage election had value. Affordable housing. You had some folks, I think Susan Polly came to Lansing last year to testify in support of Senate Bill 110, which would allow for you to have incentives with developers for affordable housing. It's a bill by Wayne Schmidt out of northern Michigan. He's finally got agreement with the landlord and property developer kind of community, and that bill is moving. It's on the floor for a Senate vote, I think, now, and I think he's got agreement with the House to take it up. So that'll be a little piece of support for your overall effort to provide affordable One of the items mentioned by Howard was the challenge of immigrants. You know, I don't need to tell you that immigration is a huge challenge, especially with these political majorities, and is a core value that is a little different from where I think this council would be. So those are a challenge. I would say this about transit. Obviously, Washtenaw County has historically been included in transit dialogue with southeastern Michigan. Transit has obviously taken a couple of pretty good shots lately with Macomb not being real interested with the limited resources. Macomb, in fairness to them, they have a higher constituency demand for roads first. They're not opposed to transit, they routinely support smart millages, but with the limited resources for transportation, they're, the county executive there said, "We're going to take care of our roads first." And you saw the probably more prominent approach by, more recent approach by the county exec in Oakland, where he's not real interested in extending that millage, that RTA-proposed millage, to the northern parts of Macomb, or of Oakland and others. So at the moment, regional transit is really pretty murky. Tiff capture, we've been watching that pretty close for a number of years. There's been a lot of activity to try to consolidate the tiff capture statutes. There's been some effort to allow other people to engage in review of tiff capture, adding, in some cases, the counties, in some cases, other folks. I think there's generally agreement among all the participants for a consolidated package of bills that we expect to run sometime this year. I don't have with me the latest version, I suspect Susan does, but if you don't have that, we'll get that for you. We talked a little bit about the ballot proposal for a nonpartisan redistricting commission. We do expect that to be on the ballot. Maybe I should stop there, there's a few other items there that we could talk about, but the biggest takeaway from tonight, beyond some of the specifics, I think, is to recognize the opportunity over the next 10 months to help develop agenda. Again, we get a whole new government, we get a new Speaker, a new Senate Majority Leader. The majority in the House is up for contest. Obviously, the Governor's office, Attorney General, the Secretary of State are all up. So there's a lot of opportunity, especially for places like Ann Arbor, to be meaningfully relevant in the development of agenda over the next few months. It's a time to engage, and I know some people sometimes bark at you for passing a resolution about something that's a little bit beyond the city. Well, we use those. So, you know, speak in any, you can write us a letter, you can do a resolution, you can have the mayor write a letter, Howard write a letter, individually write a letter. We use that stuff. So we do find value in it, when you choose to speak, in any way that you choose to speak. So we do find value in it when you choose to speak, in any way that you choose to speak. So I would especially encourage it over the next 10 months. You know, use your voice. And when these folks come to you for your endorsement, for your support, whatever, make, you know, want something, you know, have an agenda. One final note, we've been very well-served over the last period of time with the members in the legislature from Ann Arbor. Adam Zemke leaves this year. He's, obviously, takes a real passion for issues that matter to Ann Arbor. He was a leader in the pedestrian piece way back, and of course, that got jammed up with preemption interests. But he's, you know, over six years, he's really, you know, worked hard to reflect constituent interests in Lansing. There's nobody better, I don't think, that reflects the values of Ann Arbor than Youssef Rabi. And he's doing a great job doing just that in Ann Arbor, or in Lansing. And Donna Lozinski brings a very data-driven approach to, and has quickly become a leader because of her data-driven approach to issues. For sure, she's viewed already as a leader on public utility-type issues, energy, communications, those sorts of things. Additionally, she, because of her data-driven approach, was an absolute leader in the House in protecting the current no-fault structure in Lansing. So we are very well-served. Obviously, this year, at the end of the year, Rebecca Warren will leave the Senate, and we'll have a new member of the Senate. That's obviously a contested primary. But like Youssef, there's nobody that reflects Ann Arbor values better than Rebecca Warren. And if she goes back to the House, we'll be very well-served there as well. So maybe with that, we can stop and respond to some--
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Prophet, Mr. Allen, for being here. Always good to see you, gentlemen. I got a question or response to the RTA and the Regional Transit Authority. Do you represent Macomb County?
We do.
What is the, how open would the various stakeholders be in your assessment representing differing sides of this conversation in renegotiating the enabling legislation of the RTA to exclude Macomb County if they want no part in this?
I'm not sure how the other partners would react. You know, I don't know. We'd have to explore that. I know, the experience I have related to that was, in the initial RTA legislation with the previous mayor, we were on a mission to exclude Washtenaw, because there was no clear path to rail between Ann Arbor and Detroit. And at that moment in time, at least, that was the primary interest of Washtenaw from an Ann Arbor perspective in being included. And I would say this, at that time, we were aggressively supporting RTA, but with the exclusion of Washtenaw County, if there could be no meaningful path to rail between Ann Arbor and Detroit. At that time, and I don't know if things have changed, but it was fairly clear that nobody wanted to ride a bus for three hours from Ann Arbor to Detroit. But they would ride a train to and from.
I think if it takes three hours for a bus to get to Detroit, we got some bigger issues to tackle.
Yeah. So the point is that, at that moment in time, there was no problem excluding Washtenaw under those circumstances. So I suspect we'd have a similar experience with Macomb.
Yeah, I'd be interested in learning more about that. I just, I think in November 2016, Macomb County made pretty clear what their values are. And I don't know as if they're ever going to align with the Regional Transit Authority, especially the Regional Transit Authority and the package they put together with respect to what services are even delivered to Macomb. I think if I was resident of Macomb, I might have voted against it as well. But, and to preempting Councilmember Loon, I think if, as that county is, if that county were to be excluded, I think, you know, the share of raising the revenue would fall on three counties instead of four, but we'd also be decreasing the services provided.
Or two.
Or two and a half. So I guess a thought, something that I wanted to monitor, especially if November 2018 is coming less and less likely to see something.
On that, we're going to stay very close, because we know it's a big issue here. It's a big issue in Wayne County, Detroit, Oakland, and Macomb. So we're going to stay real close to it, and we'll keep you as informed as we can. A lot of the action, I don't know, other than us taking a role in terms of keeping people informed and monitoring, most of it's a local or regional action. There's not really, there may be some legislation they need to deal with at the state, which then we'd be engaged. But at the moment, it's just been a regional or local activity that we've not been engaged in an advocacy position.
I'm sure it's hard to advocate for all your, all the clients at once, on this issue. Nothing against the service you provide. I'm always a fan. I was, I'm going to jump on a soapbox quickly, and then I'll give into my more pragmatic elements and hear what we can do. I want to turn to page four of the action items that were provided.
My pages aren't numbered, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. It's under promote a sustainable and healthy environment. And it's not the deck that's up on the screen right now, but instead, the attachment provided. But it's dated April 20, 2017, and it's to pursue remedies around the installation of solar panels on residential properties. And this may be a question for Mr. Lazarus more than it is for you, or both. And I know, Mr. Lazarus, you're going to be sending us a memo any hour now about this, but wanted to get ahead of it. This issue is a result of the interpretation of state law that declares that solar panels installed in residential properties are to be interpreted as real property, and so increase your taxable value of your home, and so increase your taxes. I think in a community like ours, that's seen as a pretty big affront to our values. We're disincentivizing our community members from investing in exactly what we want them to be investing in. And it's doing it in a way that raises revenue that I don't necessarily know as if we want or need. And so I just wanted to get an update, maybe first, from Mr. Lazarus on where we stand, especially after the controversy of the Public Service Commission's bulletin this past week. And then see, this action item is need state representatives' assistance in resolving differences in policy application at the state level. So I'd love some insight there as well.
Sure. The memorandum that I asked Mr. Crawford to look at one more time before I sent it out, which will probably go out first thing in the morning. It's, the tax assessor, I think correctly, states that something that's permanently affixed to your property and is hardwired into your property is real property. It's not personal industrial property, which is subject to an exemption in the state. I have no doubt that our approach is legally correct and enforceable. There is a pending tax appeal. That we'll also wait to see how that comes out. I'm also, and we're all aware through various sources, that that puts us at odds a little bit with the way it's enforced in other parts of the state. I think this calls for clarification and resolution and reconciliation at the state level, because otherwise, you're putting our licensed assessor in an awkward position, and we are in a position where we would be knowingly violating state statute if we did not consider it to be a real property improvement.
What are the next steps, though? The petitioner in the tax tribunal case actually lives across the street from me. So this is as personal as it is professional.
Well, we'll see how his case comes out. And that may or may not spur state to do something else. But depending on if that comes out, supporting the position we're in, I think our primary means is to address this from a legislative standpoint. And I know that's a difficult challenge because of the lack of uniformity around the state. I've heard from a couple of you that Mr. Rabi has a hard time because he doesn't have support, because it's viewed as a non-issue in other parts of the state. But it's not a non-issue. It needs to be clarified legislatively.
Why would it be defined as a non-issue elsewhere in the state?
Because I don't know that they are enforcing it the same way we are, to be quite honest about it.
Is that because there's an argument to be made that it isn't permanently affixed to--
So I am not a licensed tax assessor in the state of Michigan. I can tell you that. In my mind, though, from other, you know, if something is permanently affixed to your house, and it's wired into your house, I'd have a hard time. Believe me, it's not a real property improvement. But again, I'm not a licensed assessor in the state of Michigan.
If there's an interest, we've actually been, the city of Itzalani, is, the mayor of Itzalani is really interested in this same issue. And we are more than happy to pursue legislation if that's the direction that council wants us to take.
Yeah, I think--
We may finally have found a marriage--
If you need a resolution.
--between the tax-cutting group in the legislature and the alternative energy group in the legislature.
Yeah, I mean, if this is enough direction as you need, that's great, and I think we'd be appreciative. But if you need a resolution, let us know.
I don't think so. I mean--
I think you've already adopted it as part of the legislative agenda, and we've communicated that to Mr. Zemke, Ms. Warren, and Mr. Rabi. It's just, it's hard for them sometimes when they're feeling like they're swimming upstream, but we'll continue to work with them.
Well, we'll explore. I mean, we'll use, obviously, one of our Washtenaw or Ann Arbor legislators, if possible. But sometimes, there's value politically, strategically, to use someone from the majority. So we may explore that as well. We won't leave our local advocates out, obviously, but, I mean, if our interest in getting a bill passed, let's get somebody the committee will respond to.
Yeah, I think it's pro-local control. I think it's--
That's not good for this bunch, but go ahead.
Yeah, fair enough. Depends on where the local control is, right? Wonderful, thank you. And then, just as always, coming out of the Audit Committee meeting, very grateful that we're monitoring what's happening with Section 8 vouchers and funding out of DC. Pretty scary time. The state and, or, excuse me, the House and the Senate are debating the degree to which they're going to be cutting Section 8 support, and it's, regardless, going to be a blow of hundreds of thousands of dollars to us. So unfortunately, the compromise between the House and the Senate in this case is deciding how much they want to screw over local communities who try to balance their budget, and how much they want to screw over our low-income neighbors. But I appreciate that being the number-one item on here, and I appreciate any updates as we get them.
Councilmember Loon and Westphal.
Thanks. Just one question you'd mentioned, and thanks for all your updates, your email updates.
We worry out with that stuff, let us know.
So thank you for being here tonight. Yeah. No, you really keep us well-informed, so thank you for that. One update you sent, and you touched on this tonight, you mentioned it, is the governor's proposal to institute, propose a water tax across the state. And this is another area where, you know, it's been incongruous with, you know, I think directionally, philosophically, legislators, some legislators like to protect local control. And this is anathema to that, in my view. And I, it sounded like you are poised to advocate for this, and I would just simply say that, hey, you live in Ann Arbor, people pay their utility fees for water, you know, storm sewer, sewer, sanitary sewer, and those fees are significant. And so we raise our fees on all of our residents to support our infrastructure and to make the necessary capital improvements in these areas. And this water tax, you know, would be an add-on to that, obviously. And every community, you know, I'm sure, assesses their capital improvement needs in infrastructure, and then, you know, taxes their residents in a way that, you know, supports the needed infrastructure. So I would just advocate for taking a more local approach to this and allowing the local units of government to have more control over that sort of thing.
I thank you for that. I think later on, I was going to address some other water-related issues, but this is probably a good time to bring them up. There is concern about residual lead in public water systems. As we talked about earlier today, we've taken the water, the lead, out of our public system. But where, and this gets into some very detailed discussion, but where that line of demarcation ends is a matter of debate, whether it's at the curb, whether it's at the meter, or whether it actually goes into the house. Because lead, while it's not in the public system, maybe in older buildings, how the state responds to that, how they look to apply a water tax to that, is a subject of concern. Another issue of concern in the water area are potential changes to the lead rule, copper rule, that could address how much lead is also, and it's related to the removal of lead and lead in the water supply. We've talked before a little bit about PFOAs and the standard on that, and we have to be very careful about a standard that's set so low that it impacts water treatment processes when that standard is well below the EPA advisory level. That's something else that we need to consider and continue to look at. Trying to remember what the other one was. I think those are the primary ones. So when you, when you look at the state imposing a water tax, I think it's, that's part of the story. The rest is the additional obligations it's putting on local water systems for regulatory levels that may be overly conservative. And I know we're sensitive about that in this community for other reasons, but we've got to be really careful about basing things on good science.
I would say this as well. We, all evidence to the contrary, sometimes, we like to pride ourselves in having no opinions. The only opinions we have are the opinions of our clients, we hope, at least publicly and professionally. Like I say, all evidence to the contrary sometimes. So we would follow absolutely and exclusively the direction of the city on a water tax.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Councilmember Westphal.
Thank you. Two different areas to pick up, and I apologize if I missed some discussion on this. Inclusionary zoning and/or rental restrictions, enforceability. Again, this is in the spreadsheet. I don't know if this, we're getting to this later, but I was under the impression that there was some movement, at least in committee, that there was progress on being able to use inclusionary zoning at municipalities' discretion. Is that quiet now, or?
A couple things. You mentioned, did you mention rental inspections as well?
No, rental restrictions. So I, you know, and that's been described as rent control. So we've had some hesitation asking developers to enforce rental levels if there's no official city property interest, the enforceability of that. You know, some people are enforcing that.
Let us gather some more information, if we can. There's some dialogue in Lansing about it. I don't know the current status. Do you know anymore?
Not on the individual, the rent control or the other piece, obviously.
The Senate Bill 110--
The Senate Bill 110 would allow for agreements between a city and a developer for affordable housing kind of activity, which last year, well, in fairness, Teresa Gelati did a nice job from the county, and Susan Polly, both came to Lansing last year to testify in support, or at least from the DDA. And the bill had some problems last year and didn't move. Those problems have been worked out, and the chair and the committee chair told me last week they're ready to roll, so on that piece.
And I testified last year as well. I think that's--
Yeah, right, yeah.
And that's the inclusionary zoning.
It's to allow the voluntary incentives. So for example, the language that we have in our planned projects ordinance or our downtown zoning premiums for affordable units, it's to make those voluntary premiums acceptable.
And enforceable in the future.
And enforceable.
Okay. But not--
So it doesn't fully get us to the point of being able to have an inclusionary zoning mandate, other than the volun-- it's only limited to voluntary incentives.
Got it. Great, thank you. The other area had to do with election methods, including preferential voting. That was on the spreadsheet. I think, I think it was Ferndale, if I'm not mistaken, was kind of the, or was it Berkeley, where the standard bearers for that. They actually passed a resolution to use preferential voting or instant runoff voting in upcoming elections. And I know the new voting equipment allows for that, but I, they're running into legal problems with the state.
Again, you know, this is really bad. I'm not, we have a guy in the office who really is engaged with election activity, Bill Zagman. Let me get back to you on that, because I don't know that issue as well. When you say preferential voting, I'm not really that familiar with the term. So if I answer your question, you're going to say, "This guy really doesn't know what he's talking about," and that would be true.
Also, they're using the term of art-- Also, they're using the term of ranked choice voting now, so it's the ability to rank candidates.
Can you shoot me a little note on that?
Sure.
That'd be helpful. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions? Councilmember Grant.
I'd just like to, just to speak to the water tax issue that personally, from my perspective, I'm totally comfortable spending $1 to $5 to prevent children from being poisoned. Thanks.
Further questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we appreciate these opportunities for this, especially for the exchange.
Yeah.
It's very helpful to us. I'm sincere, again, I, you know, I know I come here with some editorial comments, which are not always good for our health, but we like to know where you want to be so we can be there in your advocacy in Lansing.
Absolutely. Thank you both a lot. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank Mr. Proffitt and Mr. Owen. The ability to be more precise, more active, and more focused on those things we want to take up at the state and federal level will be a big part of how we look for, not only just day-to-day operations, but for some of the transformative projects that we want to take on. What I'd like to do is go through the year-to-date, which is an update of the chart that you have in front of you. I'm not going to go through every line, going to focus on some things that occurred over the last year, just to show the level of activity and hopefully success. So one of the items was to create and sustain an affordable and welcoming community. You can see some of the concerns that are there. Ms. Hall has talked about the impact of a reduced, a reduced reimbursement for overhead costs from the voucher program. Could wind up costing $130,000 for us in FY, as much as I'd like to be around in 2009 and 2019. So that's something that we need to look at from a budgetary standpoint for the coming year. We have yet to hear from the Bloomberg Foundation about the grant application that we submitted in October, and then we've talked about the two bottom items previously. When we look at some regional mobility and safety, you can see the council adopted the TreeLine master plan, which we're working on, hopefully through a public-private approach. We received the MDNR Grand Fialin Creek berm opening project. Hopefully, that'll be done this coming construction season. The train station project, we are still working with FRA to get that through the final review process. It remains a rather detailed and tedious effort. We are working with MDOT and some private entities on the North Main project, and we are looking at a potential collaboration on Mobility Operating System, which, if you remember, it was the basis of the City of Columbus's Smart Cities Grant that they got last year, which was $40 million of federal money and $10, $10 million of additional private money. And then, as Mr. Proffitt talked about, we talked about the $325 million in additional funding. When I first saw that, I asked him about the split, because MDOT had talked about their primary priority being state highways, and I asked what would be the impact locally, and at that time, nobody really knew, so Mr. Proffitt did add a little more clarity to that argument. On promoting a sustainable and healthy environment, we did talk a little bit about collaboration with the county on a regional solid waste approach. We should get that report back towards the end of next month, and that will inform our award of the Solid Waste Resource Management Plan, because that RFP is currently out for proposal. We want to look at remedies that incent renewable energy resources. We talked about that. The city has adopted a 100% clean and renewable approach by, I believe, 2035. And then finally, as Gary talked about, and as Mr. Postman has talked about to you as well, there is progress being made at the Gelman Paul site. Some other areas, pension and OPEB. State passed some parameters for monitoring pension systems. We are well above the criteria that they've set, and we remain in a pretty healthy position, but it's something that is dependent, as Mr. Crawford would tell you, on performance of the market. There's risk involved, and we need to watch that. All actions that address local preemption will continue to bring back, first to the committee and then to the council. We talked a little bit earlier today about restricting millage elections at different, millage elections at certain times of the year, so that's something, just as a local preemption issue, we'll continue to watch. We talked about medical marijuana twice tonight, and then we also talked about the city's support of the school district on prohibition of guns in schools. And Mr. Postman, Mr. McDonald gave that to you in closed session last council meeting. We got some board and commission input for the coming year. I'll go through that quickly as well. Under the Energy Commission, you can see we continue to advocate for a carbon fee and dividend plan. Council directed the administrator to inform our representatives at the federal level, and we did do that. Joint Energy and Environmental Commission recommendations really still talk about community renewable energy resources, solar, wind systems. We talked about the path forward on that as well. The Environmental Commission, Kirk talked about the Great Lake Systems Funding. We talked about opportunities to secure funds to protect, upgrade, and develop water, wastewater drainage, and natural feature systems, and we also had addressed the Gelman site a little bit earlier tonight. Part of that was a discussion about the remediation of volatilization to indoor air quality, which is not just the Gelman property, but others as well. And we also want to look at the revisions on the state's solid waste management regulation and look for new funding resources for local waste management programs. On the housing side, we talked about the reduction in administrative cost recovery. We also want to look at those incentives and policies that encourage landlords to accept voucher rent subsidies. What that really means is a non-discrimination based on source-of-income approach. And then also, we want to look at all the city-owned properties that we have and figure out how to best leverage those for low-income housing, whether it's standalone or it's part of a mixed-use, mixed-income project. Public arts, they seek to share public art enhancement projects throughout the city, and they want to formally add a public arts budget to the projects for which council agrees. There was an action brought up at the last council meeting pertaining to that. Transportation Commission, you can see there's a lot of words on the chart. Generally, as we look at Transportation Commission concerns, they remain concerned about speed reduction throughout the city. They remain about, concerned about Vision Zero initiatives so that we're all safe as we move around, not only in cars, but on bikes and by foot, and we want to make sure that we continue great communications on transportation safety. Some other areas of concern, we talked about water supply, wastewater regulation, some of the water quality standards. Telecommunications regulation at the federal level and at the state level is of concern. Our ability to regulate our own right-of-way is under continual assault by the telecommunications industry. So, again, both at the federal level and the state level, we need to remain engaged. And then finally, not just because the president's infrastructure funding approach was released today, but we need to look at how to leverage local money, move local government from being a primary funder to a facilitator to get bigger projects done, to look at those opportunities where we can bring assets that may produce revenue into a project that can help us leverage private dollars as well. I think we need to realize that the day of 80% public match may be over for a while, and that will address our looking at big infrastructure projects as well. So I know that there is varying, varying degrees of comfort and familiarity with that. There are levels of expertise on council that I'd love to get engaged with, but it is going to be part of the portfolio. We are working with the Economic Development Corporation to address the state statute to bring it up to date, so that becomes a viable way for us to look at public-private partnerships. So with that, I'd like to, we have about five minutes before public comment. Certainly, whatever you've mentioned today, I've taken copious notes, those things that you would like to continue to engage with, not just for the coming fiscal year, as we'll bring that update to the legislative plan with the budget, but also long-term, those items of interest and concern. This is an area where we have to be ever vigilant, and certainly, I'd like to be able to do that aggressively on behalf of the policies that council puts in place.
Questions? Councilmember Lund and Warthaski.
Just some of your slides. Thank you, Mr. Lazarus.
Sure.
On Slide 12, it's great to see the city already meets the state requirements for, related to OPEB and the pension funding and reporting, but one other key element that we've chatted about here previously is a step in improving the robustness of our pension funding, was lowering the investment return assumption from the current 7%, and I understand 7% is not out of line with what other, many other pension funds use, but I think, I think most experts would agree that it's, it's an aggressive assumption, and I'm, so I'm just wondering if there's been any recent discussion on the pension board, or if our advisors have weighed in on this regarding lowering the return assumption.
So we do have a new actuary this year who's looking at our pension, and I know that Mr. Crawford and the pension board have discussed the assumed 7% rate of return. I think the best way to address that is to respond in writing with some more detail, and we, we will do that.
Okay. Another slide, Slide 15. The bottom bullet refers to legislative remedies to support local government access to household utility data. Can you elaborate on what that means? I mean, you know, what, what data we're talking about and what restrictions we're talking about eliminating?
Part of the, one of the items in the Climate Action Plan would allow the city to look at utility data and gas and electric so that it becomes part of the disclosure of when a property is transferred or when it's rented. That information is not readily available to the city right now.
But if you could then maybe get back to us on the specifics on what restrictions we're talking about eliminating?
Yes.
I'd be interested in that. Slide 17, the bottom bullet there. You reference advocating for revisions to state solid waste management regulations. Can you speak to what regulations we're trying to change and why?
I think that's also something that's better responded to through a written, written, more detailed written response.
Okay. Slide 10, you did, that, the, you mentioned a public-private partnership for the Mobility Operating System. You, you touched on that, that it was the Columbus, that city down south, in that state down south. The, the smart city funding that they had that they're not using, and that's, can you also speak to who the partners?
Sure.
Might be and are? And you also mentioned a memorandum of understanding with Deloitte to, to exploit.
I, I have received in the last couple of days a draft MOU from Deloitte, who would be the project manager. Other partners that have been mentioned in the past include Ford University and Amazon Web Services. The, it's a multi-stepped process. The first phase of what they would deliver is at no cost to the city, but I think it's important that I provide a copy of the MOU and the plan for, to council, just so that you know what is going on before we get ourselves engaged in something that may, may or may not require additional funding down the road. So I will send that to you. I will review it, and I'll send it to council.
Okay, that'd be great. And then, is this consulting costs we're talking about with, with Deloitte?
My understanding is that the private partners will pay for the consulting costs in the first phase.
So the city would not pay?
We would not. But as we go down the road on that, there could be a cost, and we need to understand what it is. We need more, we actually need more meat on the bones. We need to understand what they're going to do and what the deliverables will be for the city before we make any commitments. They presented some general information about how systems work together to operate more efficiently, how you can manage your transportation options off your mobile devices as part of the, the system, and we just, as I said, we need to get a little bit more detail before we're able to commit.
Okay. And then just, it would help, I mean, it's nice to hear that the private partners would be, you know, covering this upfront cost, I guess, and then, but just directionally, how much we would be talking about cost-wise.
Sure.
And then, if I may, to, on the general fund growth slide, Slide 6. Yeah. Shows that the gap is for 20. Is about 1.2 million. Does that include the, the 2.5 or so the city will be receiving from the, the new recently approved county tax millage?
It does not.
Okay. Okay. And then I just, I have a question, another one about the, the Platt Road project, but at County Farm, I could follow up in writing, just to get an update on the, the status of that county initiative.
I talked to Ms. Plovick, actually, late last week. They still have not closed the deal, so as we've talked about in the committee, anything that we would do or wouldn't do to support the innovative approaches they're taking, at this point, is kind of premature, because the county still hasn't closed a real estate transaction.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Warthaski.
Thank you very much. Briefly, Slide 20, the discussion of the Transportation Commission's recommendations. Made me remember, we, the City of Ann Arbor has passed a safe passage rule, a five-foot rule. My understanding is that the state is debating one now. This might be something too, that, I apologize I didn't bring it up when our lobbyists were in town, when they, but we might want to reach out to GCSI and ask them to, you know, convey to them our support for that state, state rule to provide a safe passing distance for all.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much. Yes?
Just more of a comment, because I'm not expecting an, an answer, because it's such a big issue, but on Slide 18, under the Housing Commission, where it speaks to evaluating our city-owned properties, I know there are lots of steps to take to get to that point. Do you think there'll be a point in time where we might receive a timeline for that process, or, or if there are any steps, if there's any way that I can be supportive as liaison to this commission, I am pleased to jump in at any.
I think what you'll see in the first is because it's in proximity to and related to the TreeLine are the properties at 415 West Washington and 721 North Main. Those would be the, the first, I think. Beyond that, we'd have to look really down the road and see what, what properties would be best suited for that kind of development. But those are the two that are of immediate interest, because they do relate to a major infrastructure project that the council's passed the master plan for which.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lazarus.
I appreciate, counsel, I certainly appreciate our guests from Lansing and the students from Skyline High. I think while this is something that sometimes fades into the background in the pressure of day-to-day activities, it's certainly something we always need to keep our eye on and be aware of those things that are opportunities, as well as those things that may be bad legislation. So again, I thank council for their attention and their thoughtful consideration.
We now come to public comment, general time. Public comment, general time is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council and the community of matters of municipal interest. To speak at public comment, general time, one need not have signed up in advance. Speakers will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time clock. As a matter of courtesy, we may have only one person speaking at a time. Finally, if you require assistance in speaking before council, we'd be delighted to provide it to you. Is there anyone who'd like to speak at public comment?
Hi, my name is Ed Vilmedy. The observation I had from listening intently to what, all you were saying, from, and hearing from our lobbyist, piqued my interest when it came to the council's attention that he was also a lobbyist for other jurisdictions that don't share our transportation interests quite so closely. quite so closely, specifically representing both the Ann Arbor City, which has a great interest in public transportation, and Macomb County, which has a great interest in driving. And I just wonder, I know that Lansing is not an enormous city and that it's hard to identify all the possible conflicts between our contractors and their other organizations that they represent, but I'm just wondering whether on this particular issue, we're getting the best representation in Lansing that we could possibly get. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at public comment? Seeing no one, public comment is closed. May I have a motion to adjourn, please, with the Councilmember Westphal, taking my consent for a long discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, we are adjourned.